So I'd like to go ahead and call this comprehensive kind of meeting to order. I'd like to thank everyone who's here, for everyone who's joining us from the public. Thank you very much for coming as well. And I just wanted to share that Susan Pippen is unable to be with us today. She let me know in advance her age gap is out and the transition has to be coming at the same time. So she's focusing on that. I haven't heard from Mr. Cromwell, so I'm hoping that maybe it's just a little traffic. But we do have a forward. If at any point you need pizza or to excuse yourself, you know we're all done. And I would just like to thank them for the time they've put in to be prepared for this meeting today.
Technical person.
And at this point, I'm going to ask Chris St. Clair to come forward. I think as a start to this, he's going to bring us up to speed with the changes that we've had since our last meeting. And then we would hopefully have discussion amongst ourselves. We are continuing the goal of moving forward. Our next step when the commission is prepared is to go out to the public. And I feel like we're getting a lot closer. And staff will also have some suggested dates for that. And so, thank you so much. And let's just get going. Hey, Chris.
Hey, Molly. Good to see everybody. We have a new face here.
Catherine Gunnover is our new commissioner for District 5. Chris St. Clair is our consultant from Renaissance. And we thank you for all the work that we continue to do to put into this document. Because obviously, everybody here present loves our city so much.
Yeah.
And so, we really appreciate that.
And I want to return to thank you. Thanks for the attention that you pay to the plan and the comments that we received. I think it's built better plans as we move forward. And we're still open for comments moving forward. So I just wanted to go back there. Tonight, we're going to talk about the last set of comments that we received from the planning commission. They were in the form of action items that have been addressed in the latest version of the plan. And then we made some other modifications to the plan. And then I thought we'd talk about the public meetings, the format of the meetings, and the kinds of information. I'm not going to go through what that presentation is going to be, it's a draft outline. And feedback from you all would be appreciated on what presentation. Beginning with the action items. The first was, did the state accessory dwelling unit build pass? The answer is no, at the state level. Second action item was higher resolution maps in the plan. Please provide those. We did modify most of the maps. A lot of the resolution issues had to do with just how the GIS files got translated into Adobe. But we did go back and review all the plans. We did get a comment after the latest version that the font sizes on the plans were still a bit small. So we heard that we can make those font sizes larger. And please feel free to stop me as I go through this. The next action item was incorporate redevelopment. We're discussing infill. There is a distinction between infill and redevelopment. So we did make that distinction. There's a text box in the plan that clarifies the difference between the two. And then the references throughout the plan were changed to infill or redevelopment. Next action item, add recognizable places to the plan. And we not only added those references, but we added pictures, anything we could add to increase the awareness of this place and how it's put together now and the landmarks that are there. If you all have any additional suggestions, we're open to those suggestions. But we did sweep through the plan and then add those references. There was a request to add subsidiary plans. In the current plan, there's quite a few references to plans that have been adopted, plans and policies that have been adopted by the city. We did an extensive review of all the plans, worked with staff to determine which plans needed to retire because of their age, that they're not being relevant anymore. And then looking at those plans that are still relevant, we put together a table that we sent to you of all the plans that we reviewed, which ones were retired, which ones stayed active, and how referenced in the conference plan. So there's a matrix to provide you with that information. Next action item was inventory centers by type, regional, city, and local, in a number of centers. We not only inventoried them, we created a map series that really zoomed in on each of the centers. In some cases, we had three, two or three centers on the map itself, just for efficiency sake. But it should give you a sense of what the boundaries of the centers are. Not only that, but we gave you information about acreages within each of the centers by type, and then we had a summary of those acreages. So you've got very detailed information, and that's in appendix B of the plan. And it shows not only the core areas, but the edge areas and the acreages for both. And one other thing I want to say is, we did add a map that showed the existing HRT routes, because these are intended to be served by transit. And all of the centers that are in the plan are currently served by transit. And the hope is, as these things start redeveloping into more walkable places, that's going to promote more ridership, as I said, promotes more ridership. That's going to allow HRT to up the service. Typically, it's going to start with reducing the headways or increasing the frequency of transit along these routes, and then it can go from there. But step number one is to make sure that routes are there, and they are there for each one of the centers that are in the plan, is served by transit. The next action item was verify the accuracy of population and employment projections. They were accurate, but they were a bit misleading because we had differing increments of years. Some cases, it was five years, some cases, it was 10 years. And then rather than, it's hard to compare when you've got different increments of years. What we did was, we came up with the annual growth rate, just to make sure that we're comparing apples with apples. So we made that change. And we also made the case in the document that the region's, this region is still growing fairly robustly. I think the forecast to 2045 for the region as a whole, 300,000 more people. So you're not living in a region that's not growing fast. It is growing rapidly. What's happened is the city of Virginia Beach, because of the lack of developable land, has not gotten as large a percentage of the region's population growth. That's gone into Suffolk, that's gone into Chesapeake. So the city now needs a different way to compete with those other areas in terms of attracting a greater share, not only of the employment, but the population of the region. And that's exactly what the plan is intended to do. Inventory potential places for industrial uses. That's currently underway by the economic development. Folks, direct to Ethan.
Yep, with the focus action plan.
Next action item, incorporate limited small-scale commercial uses within neighborhoods. We had a, in the design guidelines for neighborhoods, we had an objective for incorporating not only civic uses, parks, but small-scale retail services. So we kept that language in the neighborhood design guidelines. That's for all neighborhood types except transition area neighborhoods. And remember, the neighborhood types, type 1 and type 2 are in neighborhoods that are north of the green line. Coastal neighborhoods are those neighborhoods in the coastal context area, and then the transition area. This doesn't apply to the transition neighborhoods that are in between the green line and the blue line. Next action item is emphasize tourism in key features of the coastal context area. We did add a forward to the plan. We highlighted tourism in the forward, as well as agricultural, the value of economic development from agricultural to city. We repeated that in the coastal context area section. We added some landmarks in the coastal area, just to make sure that we reflected the coastal area properly in the document. And again, if there's anything else that you would want us to add, we would be glad to do that. Next action item was highlight the value of agriculture. Again, we did that in the forward, as well as the introduction of the rural context area section, to make that emphasis. Next action item is enhance, emphasize language limiting urban services in rural area, which we modified the policy to do that. So the policy now is not allowing the extension of water, sewer, utilities of rural context areas, and limiting all other infrastructure investments apart from those directly supporting roadway safety, stormwater management, flood mitigation. There's some things that are needed just to maintain health and welfare within rural agricultural area. And then the last action item was update the draft meeting with planning commission, which we're doing right now, before we go to the public. So I'll stop there with the action items. Any further comments or questions?
I don't know if this is a purpose or not, but I love the forward and that green box you circled. I really like, but I feel like you should add to it ecotourism.
I think, I think somebody else made that comment as well.
Oh, good. Well, then, there you are. I feel like ecotourism is a main focus in the VP trail, our new kayaks, our connectivities, and all the money they're spending on that to attract ecotourism. And then the line right below it that says, the plan focuses in on locations for these industries, I would prefer, but would say for that growth. Because I don't know if industries is the right word there for the connotation. But you had it in a box, you outlined it, and I thought that was great. I wouldn't mind seeing the same notices in the forward. Somehow staying, you know, heading it apart, because I think it really does set a vision.
Okay.
For, I'm sorry, Brian. For the growth being 0.2, I think, of the city, and for your comment about, we've got to build more density in order to get our share of growth for Hampton Roads, I'm not sure that that's a goal of the city. I'm not sure that the city is trying to do that. I know we want to accommodate the growth that we are anticipating, 0.2. But I don't know that grabbing more people and getting them to move to Virginia Beach is the goal. I hear all the time from citizens, too many cars on the road, too many people, why are we cramming more people per square mile? So I kind of question that logic. And when you were talking about the plans that you retired and that you're carrying forward, I wondered, what about the light rail? I mean, we hear it all the time. It was all over the newspaper last week and the week before. Light rail is dead, Norfolk is not going to expand it. Why is Virginia Beach holding on to it? And why is it part of this?
Light rail is not part of the plan, specifically. What is part of the plan is moving forward some sort of improved transit service, which that's going to be something that will evolve over time. But the plan does not call out for having light rail. It calls for, with the redevelopment, you made the comment about traffic.
Yes.
More people will bring more trips, but that doesn't necessarily mean more traffic, if you can get the people living in those condensed or mixed-use centers to walk, take bikes, and use transit. So that's the goal, is to mitigate the impacts of that additional density by providing transportation options. And so, what's going to happen, as I said before, is transit, as transit really will follow the development, as development happens within the centers, as you create these walkable places, that does start supporting transit ridership, because people get used to not having cars and taking the options to do that. So it's, light rail's not specifically called out in the plan.
Thank you.
I find this to be a much better document, more usable. I think it's far superior to what we've had. I really want to thank everyone for all the work. It's obvious that we're into this. I'm fascinated by these maps. I mean, I can't tell you how much time I wasted staring at them all, trying to figure out where all these centers are and all this stuff going on. What struck me in doing that, I was curious because of population. And, you know, Catherine raises this different point, what's our plan? Do we want to draw a greater percentage? Do we not want to draw a greater percentage? But what we're presented with as a task is to accommodate the anticipated growth. That's what the state statute is asking us to do. What I don't understand is, when I look at a center, is what is the projected population anticipated for that center? And if I'm looking at 40 centers, but only 30,000 people over 20 years, I begin to worry, as a landes attorney, you know, looking at problems of application and more retake and more burdensome regulation that comes along with the top plan, naturally, as it should. But I'm wanting to build, always over-regulating by having so many centers that we're putting across the city, that we can't really justify to the public, because we're not really anticipating that high level of growth. So I know that's a big question, that requires some breaking down of the information. This is far superior to look at, to understand. But I don't know, like, for a regional center, are we anticipating 10,000 people living in a regional center? Are we expecting 20,000? And in particular centers, does that require new growth of an additional 15,000 or 5,000? And so, I think I'm, you know, trying to be practical about this. If I'm throwing these centers all over town, you know, anticipating this growth, that means I'm taking on those neighborhoods saying, you're going to change. We anticipate more development, more growth, more density in your neighborhoods, on your streets. This is what's going to happen. Do we really anticipate that, though? Because if we're only looking at 2% over 20 years, do we really need to be picking these fights when we're talking about 80 years down the road, and we're coming up with a 15, 20-year plan? So, you know, I didn't mean to give you all that at once, but that's what's concerning.
Yeah, good, good points. Let me start by saying that I think that ultimate goal is economic development, and ensuring that jobs continue to stay here, and new types of jobs come into the city, and the economy gets diversified. With those jobs, you want people to be living close by to those jobs. It makes it easy for them, it gives them, you don't have to travel to Norfolk or Chesapeake or Suffolk to work those jobs. It makes it easier for employers to come here, because their employees have a place to live that's close by. So I want to make sure that connection with economic development is established. I think that's point number one. Point number two, with regards to the capacity of the centers, a lot of that's going to have to do with market demand, what the market's going to bring. But as I said before, it's not like this region is stagnant. This region is growing. And so, there is a possibility that the city can attract only more people, more jobs, into the city, and increase the tax base. Third, just to give you a sense, Brian, of, I can't remember the exact numbers, but in the central district plan, which is a regional center, I think there were 5,000 willing units, something like that?
I think it's 10,000 projected population, 5,000 units.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that gives you a sense of what the capacity of, and that's the largest of the centers. That's the most intense of the centers. So that should give you a sense of what's going on. My guess is, some of the smaller centers, like the neighborhood local centers, probably 1,000 to 2,000 willing units at the most.
I think that would be a good number to have associated with this, so that we can, in talking to folks, provide them with some understanding of what we anticipate growth lies in an area, just as a means of communication in trying to deal with folks and their expectations. Because, you know, they're looking, I mean, the circles are hard to, you know, it's hard to be discreet in your discussion unless you have that number. Yes, we understand it's a big circle, but we're talking about this type of development growth and that area.
Yeah, we could certainly do that. The last point is, we purposely designed the center boundaries based on existing zoning. So if you had a single-family neighborhood, that would be, it encroached within that quarter or half-mile circle of the center. That, that area of the center would remain separate, it would not change its character. It would remain a single-family neighborhood. The big question there is, how do you properly buffer that existing neighborhood with what's happening around it? And that's what the design guidelines do, is create buffers between the neighborhood and the center development that happens.
Yeah, that's a critical point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you saying that. We have enough, or I'm not going to say my comments. Because my understanding, part of this was to avoid urban sprawl, because we don't have a plan in place, things just kind of go completely. I had a couple of suggestions. One, on pages three and four, this is a very minor, I was recommending that you change that font to match that dark blue box, just to make it more readable. On pages four, page four on the forward, versus focus is the second paragraph, I suggest you add the words strategic and changes in the gray books. Does this mean bills on the outside side focusing rooms in the right places? Or say, on strategic growth, just because I think it's a little bit wordy. That's a very minor, minor comment. On page seven, and there are a couple of other testimonials too, I would suggest that you say, setting constraints of strategic outward growth, the city must grow inward, and I would say, and up or upward, because I think there should be an expectation that there's going to be more, more freight to some of the construction. That's just, I don't need you to take the suggestions, but it's my suggestion. Then I have a couple of other little thoughts. These are a little more, I'm just trying to avoid some political controversy. I would recommend where you say, and this is, you use the phrase sea level rise 51 times, and it's almost always an all-encompassing term, as opposed to the specific sea level rise concept. I would recommend that you change it to say either relative sea level change, or just sea level change, because sea level rise is a very specific thing. And this seems to be including concepts like land subsided, et cetera. I just think it would minimize some of the political drama that goes around it. Then, there's one place where I'd recommend you move the word climate change into. So on page eight, paragraph one, sentence three, I would say, that's the only place that I would move that one phrase, just because I'm not sure that we're trying to make that over at state, we might be, I don't know whether the city council decided on this. But I would say the climate shift everywhere else, but right here, it's a little bit more of a political phrase. And, yes, those are my major, primitive thoughts.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. A couple of items on topics that are already raised. I appreciate the work that went into getting the coverage and the table updated with relative population, because I think it is more clear what we're looking at now. And when we remind now of the master transportation plan on page four, where it talks about demographic shifts, we really did the entire picture back in May, I guess, but now it's here. And what it says is that one-third, what is it, the number of people over age 65 is expected to increase by 77%. That's a critical piece of data that's buried on page four of master transportation plan. That sentence indicates that it's carried over into the comp plan itself, because it says that we're having slow growth, it's primarily a aging population, and together those two concepts drive some of these other ideas. Now, who will be building for, I mean, folks are going to be doing different kinds of things. So I appreciate that kind of getting fleshed up.
Yeah.
With regard to the housing, accessory dwelling units are built into this plan now, and that's a form of additional housing that will be dispersed throughout the state. Not exactly evenly, rural, whatever, but it's not just going to concentrate the place. So together with these centers, there is a lot of opportunity for additional housing. Maybe more, as Brian was saying, than we're necessarily anticipating will come. So I think that's all there to accommodate. I take some exception, but I don't say on the centers. I agree with Brian as well, I look at my district, I found out in our conversation a week ago, that at least one of those centers means that I said, you know, three is a full package for life, the other one will be something someday. But it's part of the recent development of some of the other centers. So if there's a tearing back of these centers, I could nominate a couple for my part of the city, that I think really don't rise to that level. And maybe that's something we want to do if that's a consensus. I take some exception that this is all about economic development. I partly think that's the case. Economic development is one aspect of this. Quality of life is an aspect of this. Sustainability of the economy, environmental, and otherwise, there are a lot of factors. And if this is strictly going to be a growth, economic development plan, it's definitely different for people on fixed incomes than it will for them at a lower level. And I think we need to accommodate all of those elements of population, and not be entirely focused on economic development. And I'm tired that it came out that that's the number one issue. It's not. Not the case. If our growth is going to be modest, then we need to be looking at people who are sustainable and one part of it. On redevelopment, thank you for the emphasis on that. I mentioned during our conversation that on page 22, there's a heading in the policies section, and it says infill development and multi, infill development and multimodal. Changing four characters, just four characters, gives us an additional idea there. And I'm going to say it in front of everybody else, so it's not just something that we talked about. I believe that policy on page 22 should say infill, comma, space, redevelopment, comma, space, and multimodal. Because it's three elements, that we do want infill, we do want redevelopment of tired old places, particularly our ancient strip centers, and then of course, we also want multimodal as part of this. I think we're missing an opportunity to really give that a little bit of picture. I agree with you on the larger fonts on the map legends. I also mentioned moving some of the labels and buttons on the maps off of boundary areas, because we want to see those boundaries, put a mountain to the ocean and that is. And then, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle Mosh, because the very first item, and he told me one, the very first action item we mentioned last meeting has disappeared. And it shouldn't have disappeared. It was something four was spoken about, we spoke about it in three different meetings, and it's likely doesn't exist. So I think we ought to just deal with it.
Okay. What was that? The context area for the courthouse. I would, I would like that, going through the, going through the description of the area, it is basically saying the green line, between the green line and the blue line. I think it would just be ideal to call it the green line context area. And, you know, I'd like to hear other people's comments about that, but it just kind of describes what it is, an area that it goes between. What is, what is everybody's thoughts about that?
I appreciate you did it on purpose. I, because you, just, my mind always goes a little bit deeper, so it's right, it wastes my time. But I would imagine they would specifically not do that, because there's already so much dispute over the green line first place, and it makes perfect sense to say the courthouse area, because this is, this is the core of the area anyway. But I would think that they would not want to phrase it like that.
So the, there it is. The consideration of the, where is it? I wrote it down. I wrote something that just is kind of a little bit, what page are you going to, better than, it's, it's just the context area, the name of, just, yeah, just the name of it. I think it's District 5. So what I see, when I see it is, is...
Feature.
Feature. So I feel that the area that we're referring to as courthouse context area, courthouse refers to the city center, does not broadly capture the area's transitional nature, land use severity. I, I would prefer to call it transition center context area, because that clearly defines what the role of that area is as a buffer, but given the fact that it's a transition area and guidelines associated with it, it might be more appropriate to call it something different. And I don't want to let the waters between the two. But, I mean, the, the green line kind of shows the, the lineage of what it, where, where it's going from and what it's going to.
I, I think it's easier to recognize as a green line, quite honestly, and I think that's what we're trying to do there. It's, look, we're, we're stuck in a ten-one election district versus seven-three-one versus every man for themselves, and we're trying to figure it out in the middle of this greater battle, how we identify our community, you know? There's a whole other way to start this conversation, and I try to say, Brian, I'm doing it, because, you know, we have districts, okay? And they're not easy to point out in this plan. However, it's much better, because there's much more meat on the bones now to talk about communities within the context areas than in there. I agree with Michael. Everybody knows the green line, everybody, and it is political, so, but that's the lumps, okay? We are in a political position, and we have to deal with the disputes that will arise. But if we're accused of hiding the ball under names that no one recognizes, that has its own problem as well, that we're, we're trying to, you know, wash over some dispute and not really just say, look, guys, let's, let's just deal with what we have. And so, I mean, I'm, I'm cutting your camp on that, and it started over. And on this, on this side of that, that question, and, but I, and a lot of work has gone into this, I think, to avoid some of these pitfalls on, on the definition of our districts, our communities, all of that, and I, and I appreciate that, see?
I like transparency. I don't mind the political outcome, if that's what the result is. In fact, I welcome that, because we need to know what people think. So I like transparency, and I think green line context area calls it what it is.
It's, it's picking a fight. Where else do you need to take a fight? We already have the fight.
So do you live in the area? Do you understand?
Right down the street.
No, I know, but if you, if you understand what it means for the rural area to, to really have that buffer zone between urban and rural, and, and to kind of hide the name under courthouse, and I have other comments when, when we talk about courthouse area, because I think a city center in the courthouse area is just way too much. We can't go up twelve stories in a courthouse area. And I think that that's where it needs to be delineated between urban and rural, and this is that area that kind of slows down the growth in between, to make sure that we have that buffer zone. So I, I don't think that this is a political fight. I, I personally, I don't think it is. I think it should be, what we're trying to accomplish in this plan, is to make sure that people understand there is a buffer there. And, and I think, just pointing out courthouse just shows that it's the civic center, and that's all that's here, is the civic center. And I think there's more to it than that.
Commissioner, can I have your director more, Nelson, comments?
I don't think we would call the inland context area the town center area. It's a prominent feature of that area, but it's not descriptive of the whole area. The courthouse area, the municipal center, is not descriptive of the entire context area. What makes this, this special area is that there is change compared to the two adjacent areas. It's different, and that's defined in part by the green line. So I'm a hundred percent with this. Anybody who picks up the plan will know what part of the city they're talking about. It's not just this southwest corner, but it actually stretches across the center and there midway. They'll generally know what we're talking about, and that's one part we won't have to get over when we enter through the plan.
I just want to add on to what you're saying, because that was one of the big ideas that came out of all this public interaction. Everybody knows the green line area, and they all talked about it, you know?
To that point, there was an entire section taken out of the paragraph taken out, that specifically stated that, you know, that was one thing that I was going to bring up, is, you know, I think we need to look at why that was taken out. I, I think if that was a point in the first three, four iterations, I wanted, I just don't understand why it was taken out this.
Well, but it's not just the green line. This is a transition area. The point is that it's not the green line. It is the transition area between one place to another. I live in this area. I, we all refer to it as a courthouse area. Go to the courthouse and turn left. Go to the courthouse. We're all referencing the courthouse in, in any discussion we're having about it. I don't say, go to the green line and turn left. Do you know, we're all looking at it in reference to that area. But I, I do think, I do think that the green line is critical. I don't want to suggest that's not the case, but I think we are specifically choosing to pick a fight when we say it like that, because now we're, I think then you're going to make it seem like you can't do anything in that area.
Well, if you look back at the old comp plan, is this very common? Here, I got mine up there. If you look back at the old comp plan and the description of the green line and the transition area, it explicitly straight, it states that there is, that the green line is not meant for no growth and no development. It's just meant to be a buffer zone. So the understanding from everybody in the city is that the green line is a hard stop, and it's not. The blue line's a hard stop. And so calling it what it is is not trying to go out there and say, well, no development passes this point, it's just responsible development in a transitional way to, to step down from urban to rural.
But I don't think people really look at it like that, because every dispute I see discussing this issue thinks of the green line in terms of, that's where it all ends. And so I think we're just creating more of a problem than we are fixing by saying like this. For us, if we're looking at this, and we're focusing very hard and learning all the things we can learn about to be part of the planning commission, we're looking at it a different way than most people are. Most people are probably not going to read this, and then they're going to see, green line, hard stuff, you can't do anything there. Like everybody said.
It's not a problem to educate people, they need to educate themselves, and we need to call it what it is within a plan that's going to dictate how our cities work.
I just don't agree with that so good, like we need to worry about courthouse area.
But that's fine, and we can, we can definitely disagree on this many, I just want to make sure that we're not putting something in the document to make people feel better. And we need to put it in there going in this city. It's not, not a, not, not a, not a controversy in one way or the other.
Look, turn to page twenty-nine. Look at the legend on the map. What does it say?
What?
What does it say? Call it floating slip, but it requires explanation. It says transition context area here, because that's what it is. It's a transition from the suburbanized north to the rural south. And if it requires, as we said, you know, meeting on February or March, is the board meeting, we're talking about the same name, then every time you say courthouse, you have to explain what you really mean as the transition or the green line. You don't need the two words, just use the word that it is, it's the green line area. And honestly, I'd like to call the question, and I know we're not in a formal session, but we need to.
Well, can I, can I just add the word you're saying, because I do agree with that. I don't like words like transition, because I've, I've dealt with landies for twenty-five years. There are plenty of transitions of all over town. Are they transitioning from a heavy industrial to residential? I mean, it, it all depends, so the word communicates little to nothing to me. The green line communicates a lot. Courthouse is interesting, but one day we may do the courthouse, you know? I, I just feel as though, at this point, yes, it has a reference, I agree with you, but I think across the city population, that green line has really, people have really tried to learn that much about their city and where they are, and that, and that means a lot to me. I, I believe so. Anyway, it's an interesting debate.
Madam Chair, can I make just a few quick comments? I just want to make sure that you understand why, and I, I think we went through this before, but why we came up with courthouse context area. So all the way back to nineteen seventy-nine, nineteen eighty-five, nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-seven in our, in our comp plan, it was referred to as the courthouse sandbread, sand bridge study area. So that's why we came up with that. Obviously, we didn't want to call it a transition area, because it became very confusing when you have the Princess Anne Commons, ITA, and then the actual transition area. So that's why that change came in, and how we came up with courthouse. We didn't just pick it out of the sky, we pulled old plans and used some context there.
And I, I mean, I think that's fair, you know, municipal center courthouse, I think it's, it kind of says that the area that's, that's within an area, but I don't think it clearly defines the area that we're really trying to highlight here, especially with the guidelines and all of the plans that are actually in place for this specific area. But it encompasses the bulk of the area. And so, I mean, I would, I, I would, I would like to see the name changed, and I would, I would, again, welcome comments or, you know, people saying otherwise, that they don't want to, or that they do want to. I mean, I think we should stay clear direction on this, because it has been something, but, and I don't want to belabor this point anymore, because I've got plenty I need to get to.
I don't see why we need to pick a fight. There's no, you know, kind of a trouble with this. I just, I think we're choosing to pick a fight by making this change.
I think the point's been picked, and we can set it right.
I don't consider it wrong, I live right here.
So Commissioner, file one, is your district, you have something to share with us?
I would choose to agree with Mike with regard to the designation. I mean, everybody since, what, seventy-nine, green line came into effect, I mean, that's been the longer. Everybody in the city has, has. How about a compromise courthouse slash green line? Would that confuse things too much?
If you're pulling the delegation, I support Mike's. I can stand a little, I can lie. All right, so I'm not hearing a motion yet, but I'm hearing a lot of discussion. I'm, I'm not sure. And I'm wondering if this is an example of an opportunity when we go out to the public so that we can get some more feedback. I'd be curious, I'd be curious to know what they would say, when we present, again, this is a document that's essentially going to have additional drafts, and we get more of our paper to see what's, what are the things, you know? In the presentation, it could be courthouse green line, like maybe courthouse. I'm not a hundred percent convinced it should be the green line. I was comfortable with courthouse, so I'm just going to call it, and, you know, hold it to thinking on it a little bit, I'm just not sure enough. Oh, sorry, yes. Commissioner?
I'm probably the quickest person to accept, I mean, I don't know, I don't know exactly without looking at a map or a description, where the green line is. I don't know where the courthouse is. Just for the journey, I'll get all the way that, near the oceanfront, and to come down here, it was a, it was a trip, it's like a day trip. And courthouse has to stand out as a, as a more.
Madam Chair, do you want to poll us so we can move on and do we start with that?
We think so. But, okay.
Or do you want to vote, or do you want to handle?
Well, I mean, I have a point where this is like a initiative, like, would anybody be interested? Well, I guess I would.
I think it's, yeah, okay, obviously, I think it's, I think it's our job. Again, this is supposed to be a planning commission document, right? So if this is the will of the planning commission, or if it's not the will of the planning commission, I think we should take a direction one way or the other. And then, if, we can still put it out to the public to say, hey, this was changed by the planning commission from the consultants. Do you agree with this, or do you agree with what the consultant said? It can always be changed, and, and I think it's, it's great for a point like this to be taken to the public, and I think that that should go to the public, if that's, you know, it's such a sticking point within that group. But I think we need to, we need to take a position one way or another. It's our document.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes, the opposite of the House of Representatives.
Just to jump in, so, not voting today specifically on it, but if you'd like to poll just to see where people's heads are, that's totally fine, but.
Excellent. We're just going to poll. Looking for massive progress. Okay, so, um, will this poll for the suggestion to leave the context area to the green line? Is that correct, Commissioner Mosh?
That would be correct, yes.
And so, all that would be, all that would be, would be changed in the, yeah, this way you, okay. Six yeses to change the name, any opposed?
As long as we like each other, I don't know if we're creating. We have, we have six thousand people to participate in this. This city is over four hundred, what, thirty thousand? I don't know if we can get a full idea of this from that small machine of a nation. A lot of people are going to be worried. They don't come to this stuff, they don't watch us, and I just think they know that a little better, that it's where it is. You know exactly where it is. Oh, we did not hold a vote.
We did not hold a vote.
But it is the sensible commission.
The majority.
Going there.
The feedback to the, the feedback to the, the consultants is such that.
The context area.
The context we changed to green line.
So Walter, were you?
Why turn?
Oh, okay. Before we go, Mike, let me, one thing about the recommendation to revisit the centers. What's going to happen next, and I'll talk about this in just a minute, is that zoning ordinance will be updated. I would suggest you go through that process, to sort through what the centers from a legal perspective will start looking like, before you make that determination, because you may have some real opportunities that you're not quite aware of, without knowing all of how these things are going to be legally regulated, zoning ordinance. So my recommendation is to leave the centers as is. You know, you could, in the zoning ordinance, say, you know, some of these designated centers will be off limits for another ten, fifteen, five. There's a lot of ways you can address that concern when you get to the next step, so that would be my recommendation.
About being this plan every five years, it can be updated.
Could you address Commissioner Mosh's question of, which is also one of mine, specifically with regard to the center in the now green line context area?
Yeah.
Would the general definition of the twelve-story tall building apply in that area? Would that really stand out and not be even on?
Yeah, so there's actually three centers on Princess Sand Bridge Municipal Center, which has its own set of design guidelines in place now, okay? Then you have, I think we call it the Santera Medical Education Center, can't remember exactly what they are.
It's corridor one leading to, I have an aviation, there's no indication of where the building, unfortunately, it's like an absolute.
So, so what we can do in the, in the policy, in the policies for those three centers, in fact, we were fairly specific about those centers, I think, in the, in the, in the plan, I'll have to go back and take a look, Walter, Mike, just to make sure that we have language in there, but I understand where you're coming from, and we can beef up the language if needed, just to make sure that.
I think that's where we're coming from, because parts of all three of those are within the ITA.
Right.
And so they have to conform to whatever the ITA goes with, they may be restrictions. You can't invent something. You can't invent something that's going to be complicated there. And at least from my perspective, I want to make sure that a general definition for the whole city, it might not fit in this one area. We don't run department.
And noticing that some of it does go outside of the context area into another context area. I mean, I think we should be able to kind of have that, uh, ability to go higher outside of it.
Gotcha.
The inside of it.
Gotcha.
I don't want to hold back from the other.
Yeah, the, the other thing about these centers is that they're, they actually, development in those places right now are pretty close to what a center development would look like. So they're, they're fairly mature centers already, but I, I, I hear your point.
I think page 31 could be a place you could, we aren't going through, just doesn't play smarter than the district.
Well, I, I want to address those figures of projected growth for these centers. Because I, I think it's really important to understand what we're estimating future growth of these centers to do in terms of population and jobs or whatever, however it's quickest to refer to them. So that we understand when we're introducing, if I'm going to introduce the coastal area, this is, you know, I'm talking about six centers here. I want to understand what the objective growth is going to be. The people can communicate that to the people that are interested to know what we're talking about. You know, one of them is the Central Beach area. That's significant, significant growth, you know, 10,000 people coming over the next 20 years. So to have, I understand we can't hold it to the person, but if there's some rough idea of what's anticipated, I think that's really important to have either in some key or something, uh, as part of this. Yeah. It would certainly help me understand.
Yeah, we clearly, I mean, we have the data. In fact, we've done a little bit of exploring into that very question. Brian, um, Kathy, I'll talk to you later about that analysis, beginning with you there. It's not a complicated analysis to do. We can, we can generate those numbers.
I understand the estimates and all of that.
Yeah.
Sure. Page 23. Under the economic development university goals, I think, um, we've kind of put ourselves in a, in an, in an area of just resort area for growth and tourism. Um, but I think we've realized that tourism is spread out amongst our city. So I don't want to box us in and I have a couple of, of areas. I think the notes that I had given to you earlier may, may reflect some of that, just trying to make sports tourism a little bit abroad, citywide. Um, so maybe for this goal, sustain and grow tourism within the resort area across the city, guide by marketing opportunities. Might be a good, and I can read the notes after. Um, tourism, like I said, is citywide and should be addressed as such now. Um, also on page 23, under objectives, um, but I kind of feel like these are all just kind of like thoughts that were written down and kind of put in, in no particular order at all. And if I were to be able to rearrange them, um, I would try to rearrange them in a, in a way that maybe the context areas go in the book. Just so that there's some sort of an order in it because it's like it hops around, um, from kind of context area to context area where you've got the ARP program. And then later on down, you have something else that talks about agriculture or something. But anyways, I had an organization structure on that in mind. But, um, bullet points eight, nine, and 10 kind of say a lot of the same stuff. And I was thinking of a way to make it sound a little bit better and not have as much, uh, have as many bullet points and kind of not so redundancy that's, that's in it. Um, maybe combining the three and two and maybe making one of them identifying remote areas for growth across a broad range of market sectors, including industrial, renewable energy, innovation-driven enterprises and industries with demonstrating momentum. Some of these are very specific industries that we, that we pointed out. I think for create a plan for 2040, I, I don't think we just need narrow focus. I think we need a broad, we need to keep it broad and open. So number two would be support unique economic development opportunities such as sports tourism, screen sports, eBay tourism, and other evolving niche sectors that contribute to a dynamic and resilient economy. And then revise the language for bullet one. Bullet one? No. Bullet two, I believe, uh, to match the language on the previous page. Um, continue to use policies and regulations that limit development in the rural context area to support sustainable agricultural production. And here we just have to continue that, again, no, so does the person. Um, continue to use policies or regulations limited development in the rural context area and maintain viable farming. Kind of the previous language we used on page 22, just kind of seems like we should carry it over. For this too. And I can, I can sit later and, you don't have to get all of this information down. We can, we can go over it after, but I just wanted to make sure that some of these things, maybe people might feel a certain way about. And that's the only reason I brought it up here is to just give a meeting consulting. Um, we kind of put ourselves in a, in a, especially with the last one, provide setting for question. Light industrial, use renewable energy industries and other strategic market sectors. It sounds open, but provide locations and other opportunities for industrial and logistics business group. I feel like we can provide areas for more than just that, but that included. And then that also incorporates the one right about the two. And those two bullet points that I stated should be able to kind of capture all of that. Agreed. Let's do it.
Somebody's got to catch me, but.
Move on page 24.
Do you mind?
Yeah, I was going to say, if anybody has any comments that go along with this, I'll.
Yeah. Okay, on page 23, there's an item here on the bullet points. And I agree with everything that Commissioner Walsh said. The word industrial is on this page, but four times, and that is one small part of our economy and our development. It's, it's highly noted, I emphasize here. On bullet point number five, this is, I believe, the first reference in the document to the stages, special economic growth areas. Throughout this document, there is what I believe to be a mistake that there are four stages. Stages one, two, and three are around Oshieha. And they're very similar in how they're designed. In fact, for like industrial and uses like that, they don't, all the things you can't do with the overland zone. But Sega four is entirely written. That is not written with industrial as one of the uses. And it is conflated in here with the others on multiple pages throughout this document. Page 97, under the title industrial land uses. It was Sega four, Sega four is not industrial land use kind of policy. So I think a fine two components to go through this. And with stages are referred to, if you're talking about industrial, it's one, two, three. If you're talking about them for some other reason, maybe it is all four of them. But we're shooting something into four that was never intended to be written. So thank you for having me.
I have a question. Is there a reason that we put, we listed all these specific items, social sports, the verse was there? And the reason I'm asking is because one of the things we've been trying to do is bring in classing jobs. And they said they want specific things such as line rail and, you know, where you can talk about careful reading, walk toward and all those things. And then one of the social sports, is this any, are any of these things, the items that they were specifically trying to highlight for that purpose?
So, so the list that you're looking at was information you got from economic development. This is their, this is what their focus is on. So we, we paid attention to what they have to say.
Is there a way where they can streamline this in a way that, I'm kind of, the only way to just jump right out of you is those are things I remember them talking about. Is there a way they can streamline that, streamline that, that would make you comfortable with that, those phrases somewhere else or in some other way?
Yeah.
I'm just, that is just right out of me, sort of hold it.
Yeah, and I, I understand where you're coming from, Mike. It's a list, but there's other potential things that could come in, come in, and we need to, to talk, to say that.
Yeah.
Christian, do you have something to add to the informal? Do you have a slide with the things that you want to focus on for that department? So this deserves to be on there.
Maybe there's a little presumption thing right there.
Okay, well, uh, different, Commissioner Powell, please.
Your point.
All right, I'll just give you a chance. I know you have some more things.
Okay, we're getting.
Going around the room.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So I was going to ask John this question. How did I ask him there before? I didn't see agritourism anywhere in the paper. And, you know, the city of Chesapeake is fighting about agritourism. State code says a city cannot regulate agritourism. It has a broad definition of what that's, how to do that's called agritourism. With weddings, partying parties, that's what it's called. Um, unless there's going to be a substantial impact to health safety law there. Has there been much in your committee work and in your community? Any efforts to address agritourism and come up with something to identify locations that would be appropriate or anything like that?
Yes, I mean, there's been, there's been a lot of inch in agritourism for sure. There's some zoning issues with agritourism, the zoning that we have now. Especially in a way, we, we need to have that type of.
I guess what I'm saying, that can be a very useful tool for preservation. If there's another source of income for landowner, uh, to host events, but it also can disturb a rural area in a way that people don't want in their community. So it's, so to address it in some way, right now it's this gray zone where it's going to be a case by case. You know, you bring here 100 people, I'll bring mine. I'll just show you one of the, uh, the, see hall and see how it works.
What you wanted to, I think, Brian, that you need to keep in mind, you cannot have both. It's very, very hard because if you're going to have an active agricultural community with equipment and spraying and planting operations near a engine, um, and then the fatherflop of, you know, of the farm next to you.
Where you have people coming in for weddings.
And, and hollering sprayers, so we're being put in airplane. It's just not going to work.
I know about the soil a lot and I'm sure.
And I think it's, it's just a, it's a clash of two cultures, essentially. Yes, I'm moving to farms anywhere and here in the whole Virginia, wonderful vista for agritourism. But it, it has to be done. Can't, you know, you don't want to say it can't be done because of whatever, but you have to do it very cautiously.
It's difficult stuff.
It's, it's very difficult.
Um, and I agree with you about conflicting uses.
Yeah, it's, it's not necessarily conflicting use, it's just, I don't know, it's just.
It's one use to the other.
Yeah.
It's a little bit of play.
Yeah, it's just you can't, you can't, you can't do both. I mean, you've got enough.
The state policy is trying to say, we want to encourage farmers to preserve property out of development. And this is one tool to give them to host parties and to do this. And obviously, if you're a farmer doing it, you're conscientious that you're not going to be spraying your crowd with pesticide. Uh, uh, but, but I'm just saying, you know, you know, we don't address it at all. We don't say it's a goal that we want to support. Uh, and I'm just curious to get the lay, the lay-in on that question.
Well, there's certainly, um, what do they call it, uh, that's the right term, value added. I can't remember what they have it for. But yes, I would say that, that, that definitely needs to be addressed because of, um, you know, especially for the younger generation coming into farming, you know, if, if they inherit this land from their parents or grandparents, they might not want to farm, but, you know, this would be given an avenue for them to keep the land and be able to, you know, keep it through a revenue stream. And I know several people that have very large and productive agritourism, like that field operation. It's done, they've done very well.
Here is one tiny mention of it, and I only found it because I searched through the online document. On page 144, under goals and objectives, the supporting objectives include, and the last bullet point. So it is mentioned, but it is not, you know, it is not in multiple places that I can find.
Ah, there it is.
Yeah, it was, but I only did a search for it. That's the only reason I, anyway, I did not find it on my own account.
That's a good point. Because I was just talking very, very much. But it's, it's, it's kind of oblique and it's, you know, um, we don't emphasize it. And we do emphasize industry, we emphasize economic opportunities. And, you know, I think it's going to be a subject that we're going to have to confront in some way, looking in the future, that people are going to want to do these things out in the country, they want access out there. And then we're going to have probably a zoning industry to make a determination that this is substantial impact to health safety law. And I'm regulating you. And, you know, and we make no real mention of it. So it's just a subject.
I recognize where we are in the meeting, that we're partnering through a presentation. This is kind of, this is good. I think we've got a lot done in 40 minutes. But I'm mindful that you want to talk about a presentation of parliament.
I do.
But I, I think what we're doing now on the media that actually gives us there instead of having a map. So what I'd like to do is follow up on one of the other items that Commissioner Walsh mentioned. I'm just going to tackle the big issue here. With regard to the ITA and the green line, I had a conversation, I was invited to have a team's meeting with the staff and with the consultants that I had a week ago. And during that conversation, I made the following comment. City council at their last business meeting of the year said that they were going to address the different ideas about land uses in the ITA at one of their upcoming meetings in August. With that in mind, when I got this revised plan, I was quite surprised to see the number of changes that were made including some of the Commissioner Walsh has mentioned, where sentences that had been in the prior version were wrong, where emphasis was placed on particular ideas about the ITA that were not brought to us in the years toward those public meetings. I felt that we were getting ahead of the city council. And regardless of what people think is the best outcome, we're not on city council. And since they've said they're going to pay the government to tell us, I think that the right thing for us to do for the moment is to back out these changes that have a thumb on the scale and express a particular desire for an outcome and neutralize this language to the currently adopted plan. And when the city council tells us what they want to do, then this can be modified accordingly. For example, on page 133, where it says that the ITA plan should be updated to achieve balance. That's a provocative statement. The ITA plan is balanced because city council said so, and they haven't yet seen the future change it. And so I think it's getting ahead of them and presumptive to say that it's not balanced. And I'd like to see that kind of wording taken on. When I look at the prior version we were given on page 14. When I look at the prior version we were given on page fourteen, the sentences there, "Conversations with the public during the update of the comprehensive plan indicated a strong interest in enforcing the green line policies." What sentence is this here? Well, that happened. Whether you think that's good or bad, it happened, and it was written here. And I would think it's just, Commissioner Skoomo, his analogy, it's picking a fight. If you start picking these things out and looking like something's going on behind the scenes, that the planning commission didn't ask for, I think we just ought to neutralize this fact, and when council tells us what to do, we'll accommodate it. That's my two sentences on the ITA. The courthouse context there, the transition area, the green line, this whole ball of wax, and these changes there throughout the study. And I've said, and I already told you all on the conference.
Right, and I just want to make sure that we're clear, we did everything here, and we are taking out that language to be just more general and to point to the ITA and the city master plan, and if that changes down the road, that's the.
Which specific language are you using exactly? Does it cover a number of things?
So, where, the one on page 133.
You're talking about the sure balance phrase, or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, but I'm just wanna make sure I know the phrase that you're talking about, lifting it out of there.
Right, so that second bullet, and then we're, we're going to put more language in a follow the 2017 ITA, the city master plan, and if there are further, if there's further direction from city council, that's, that's our plan.
I like that, based on the correspondence I've been getting and the comments of some people who are very passionate about it. So, if city council changes that use plan, that's on them, but I don't want to accept ownership of that idea.
And I'll just say, if this was a hypothetical years out, maybe we wouldn't make a recommendation. But when they said they're gonna answer it within one, I think it's just provocative for us to try to get ahead of them, you're getting pissed.
Well, I, I just, I'm not at all objecting to a movement, I think it's an ever-movable beast to ensure balance, but I'm presenting English. But, you know, I mean, if it lowers, you know, the arms raised of this thing, I'm, I'm cool. But I think, you know, something's ahead, something's good, and we're gonna have to deal with it. We are a recommending body, and recommending balance is not, it's a projection, to me, but if it's going to stir the pot unnecessary, I don't have any problems.
Thank you, Director, and I wanted to bring that out in front of everyone, instead of one of the conversations we had in Hall 12, Tuesday.
Walter, just to clarify, the language was added, I had to request somebody to say something more about the current ITA master plan. So, that's, most of that language was pulled out of that document. Having said that, that's why I got to put it in there, just wanna be clear about it. Having said that, I think the direction that you've offered makes sense moving forward.
And so, we have consensus agreement, and it took a previous language, that I'm comfortable with that.
The other item I wanted to put on the table, I sent an email today, I'm not, I'm not sure if everybody got a chance to read it, but in the same team's meeting, and frankly, you know, that are working.
I think, I thought we already said about all these housing goals, that's what it's crazy. They're way past our pay grade.
Everybody's here, and now we're in front of the public, so I just wanted to put it on the table, and we can dispense with it. That what I said in May was, the recommendations about housing policies, found on, starting on page twenty-six, it lists all these recommendations that went as such. City council did not actually authorize all those recommendations. So where this document uses the word implement, then, that is getting ahead of what city council actually authorized the city manager to do. They only authorized the city manager to do three things, not all these things. And so, I don't think it's our business to bootstrapped in something through a backdoor. And Director Warren, in response to that email this afternoon, offered two options. One is, leave all the language in and highlight the ones authorized. I would prefer the timid version, that, you know, obviously, that are working, that is along the lines, which you'll be selling page twenty-six, the recommendations authorized by council from the housing study. And if they want to authorize more and come back to the well.
I, I would prefer to just present, present for council's consideration, you know, hey, council, can we consider it and implement it? If we believe that these are good recommendations.
They are good, and they're trying to use.
Well, re-introduce, I mean, this is a recommending document. You know, if, if, if we're trying to say, we've done this study, take another look at it, I don't have any problems with that. We're recommending, you know, we're not, we're not, we implement anything, we're simply saying, consider.
Well, I'd like to speak to the director's email, I think, which he referred to, Walter, is the second option, which means any recommendations not yet authorized by the city council, and amend in a later date if required.
I don't understand that, quite honestly, that's, that's confusing. Nothing is, nothing is passed by council until we've recommended this document to them to, to read it and discuss. I mean, that's, I mean, that's how I take it, this, this is, I understand that you consider things specifically, but again, we're presenting a complete document with dozens upon dozens of recommendations all through it, things they have not previously blessed, that they're going to be seeing for the first time. They will see it, they will accept it, or they will not.
Again, let me rephrase what I'm gonna say, and I'm gonna say it more strongly. This document says that we're recommending that they implement a trust fund, that they implement a land trust, that they implement subsidies on housing. I am in favor of recommending those things, the city council has already received, heard about, and declined to do.
I understand what you're saying, but there's a big difference between consider and implement. I'm all for taking out the word implement, I don't, I don't think that that's what I'm saying, it's a consideration. But again, there's a lot of here that this council has rejected. And we can go past through, you know, I don't know how many council leaders we want to go looking at, and look at how many they rejected, and say, we're not gonna bring it back, because this is a total package.
Right, and we're just looking at the housing study, and it's technically required to.
To, to address it.
To, to address it, and what the options are, if we're aspirational.
I think, as document, as this document, it's supposed to be a little bit more high level. I think we've gotten into the use of, in this specific area, maybe we're just very high.
I don't like saying, you know, implement a trust fund at all, I'm, I'm totally against that, but saying implement versus consider the recommendation of the housing committee and study, that, that, I mean, I've, and if they've already seen it and rejected it, they can do it again.
We can continue, I think, to point to that, as our record. But does it belong in this document? Do you mean, there's nothing wrong with us saying, hey, look at this study, but does it belong in this specific document? And I'm not sure that it does.
It doesn't belong.
But I, I just, well, I know, but do we want, and I, I'm not sure that it does, though.
Well, I think, I think, I think what we're doing is looking at one study and saying we should make changes based upon this one. I, I think what we should have here is, consider studies that we've already had, as well as new studies that will come to us to make our decisions based on, um, what the best ways to go out addressing this issue. I, I don't know if we need to just say one study specifically, I, I think this could be a part of, uh, one of many studies that we could look at.
Well, I, I wanna push back a little bit on that, because this was a study that was commissioned by the city. Very detailed, focused study, it's a list of recommendations.
I think the problem is, it's, it's, it's. Took a consideration and only took a few of their recommendations. That's, I think that's where it kind of just.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue the point, it's just, this, this, it's not one study among many, it's, it's a very focused, very deep comprehensive study. We'll work on the language in terms of, um, how we can make this work, I'm not sure we can resolve it tonight, we understand the concern, and we'll send the language back out to you and see if that, that scratches the itch.
Really, this is reading the textbook, and then you go and putting it in, and the implementation, it just, it just doesn't work.
The rule of implementation, I think is wrong.
Yeah.
I'm totally, we can live that. Looking to go with regards to that. And I think he said that, that the main meeting, we all have to see it, was my recommendation.
I think we did, put this on in.
We will have that section.
We agree that the language needs to be modified.
Do you want me to knock out the little things?
Let's do it.
All right, this is, page twenty-one, open space.
We're fired.
All right, page twenty-one, open space acquisition program should be mentioned exactly the same as the ag reserve program is mentioned on twenty-two. And again, this was in our conversation, it's, therefore, it's the same kind of.
I want to point this, which, which side of the chart is your, um?
Yes, I, so.
There's a little bit of like, uh.
It's under, in the left side, I see, I see open space framework.
Established environmental, open space framework? On the twenty-one, the first page.
Okay, on page, where did you see, I'm sorry. This is supposed to be, okay, page twenty-three, you see the second bullet point there, continue the ag reserve program. What I'm saying, on page twenty-one, should have the same bullet point, continue the open space acquisition program. This is where it fits, it's under environmental sustainability. Yeah, and it's just a missing bullet point that you've modeled.
That's a big idea, this words, this slide, is what you're saying.
It is under big ideas, it isn't under objectives.
It's not under objectives.
So why didn't it go to the next page, like the ag reserve?
Where there's an actual policy, an existing program that's been there, that should be contained. That's all, it's just, we have a program that should be mentioned, just like the other programs, under objectives.
I'm good with that.
All right, on, I wonder if that's strategically protected to make open spaces optimize the loss of land.
Are you trying to move from twenty-one under environmental to economic sustainability, is that true? Let me try to repeat.
You can start to keep it on page.
I'm on page twenty-one.
You would keep on twenty-one?
Yeah, there's a big idea, but it doesn't have the objective to implement it, and we have that program, it's just not mentioned. I'm just looking for the bullet point.
I'm trying to kind of cover that, continue to strategically protect and connect open spaces, and it wasn't warranted to me or at that state.
Maybe I shouldn't say it, I mean, I'm not in the public.
So, I think my only other comments here, believe it or not. In appendix A, page two oh one, there's a recommendation that I couldn't find mentioned anywhere else in the whole document. It says, "The recognition of shared districts for open space in stormwater," and I have no idea what that means. Can anybody tell me what that means?
What page are you on here?
Page two oh one.
The A, the very first, it, it finished.
That was one of the most exciting things.
I have, I have, I stand up on my.
Shared?
Shared district approaches of open space and stormwater.
Yeah, yeah.
What does that mean?
What that means is critically, critically important. Pull back on the hyperbole, it's very important. So when you're putting these centers together, one of the things that, that makes buildings float away from each other is when you require them onsite to deal with open space, stormwater, and parking. And what the shared concept is about is designing a place, so that infrastructure, which is needed. We have to deal with stormwater, we have to deal with open space, you have to deal with parking, it's dealt with across all properties.
Okay, I get it, so you have a shared link for the whole center there.
It's a shared.
So, I'm just gonna recommend, because that's important, and it's buried down here in the sixth bullet point in the appendix A. Maybe we'd like to mention that.
But environmental.
Maybe we're talking about centers, how centers are put together, and emphasize that idea we have here.
We can certainly do that, it is in the design guidelines, we do talk about the design guidelines, but that's where, that's where the process is, and I understand what you're doing.
Okay, my other comment is from Lione District. Zoning B four K only relates to the storied Tamsville open lane, and yet, on page two oh three for the coastal area, and page two oh four for the courthouse area, in the table, it says somehow the storied Tamsville was planned those days.
Two of those days.
The storied Tamsville doesn't exist in those areas, so they need to come out. And then finally, with regards to the master transportation plan, we have three comments on that, since we were given it at the same time. There are three sections of the master transportation plan that currently exist that are not mentioned in the new version. They're small, but they each have an important element. One is freight rail, we do have rail lines in Virginia Beach, called freight, in the urban station area. And that is how the concrete is going to the tunnel expansion, it's going right up, right through our city up there, and there is no paragraph about freight rail. Also, for those industrial use areas up there, where we have the leads, we have the spurs, that creates opportunity for industrial development up there. We need a paragraph back in about freight rail. Number two, the current MTP mentions our maritime routes. Briefly listening from this MTP, and it's not accurate, the most important commodity shipped into Virginia Beach comes by water, and that's the jet fuel for oceanics. And here we are, we often mention our maritime routes and their importance to our economy or to our transportation as a whole. We need pretty much that same paragraph we had twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen, freshened up, brought forward. A last missing section in the MTP from twenty eighteen relates to parking. And parking is mentioned throughout these other context areas now. Specifically, in the coastal area, I think we have mostly key parking issue, and that's what one of this highlighted in the prior plan. If we're not getting good parking in the master transportation plan, then I think we need to at least beef it up a little bit more as a focus topic within that coastal area for sure. It's, it's a huge problem, and city council is looking at tens of millions of dollars for garages. I think we need to focus on that as the topic. The other two points in the master transportation plan, said number three, is missing sections, page twenty-one congestion map. That congestion map, when you look at the corridors in the maps for the main comp plan, to meet those requirements, where we already have congestion on some of these areas, where we're talking about loading the traffic. As an example, we just heard an application recently by the food bank, they have a lot of trucks, they came out in their Q and A with their attorney, that their trucks are not going to run on freight quarters, they're gonna do what everybody thinks is common sense, they're gonna go right into the river and right up Princess Anne. They're not gonna go on Long River, Chosina, where we think it's a freight quarter. And so, for my district, District One in Tamsville, or District Seven in San Antonio, having more tractor trailers run through those areas is something that I don't believe constituents in my area are gonna be super excited about. When I look at this congestion map, and some of these other corridors that we're emphasizing, if that's not high priority of CIP to upgrade those roads, and we know it's not, it's trained by cash, I think we're setting up a problem. We don't have time to vet that before this goes out to the public, but I think this is something that all collectively, staff and commissioners, can think about a little more, with a little more focus. The last thing I'll say, but it's the same thing, I attached it from the corridors and the commission. So, thank you for the opportunity, for all of us.
I wonder if there's any way, this is a huge problem, so I don't, it's not, it's too old to, to reference the pages where some of these maps are. Because they'll, they'll be talking about something, and it takes minutes to kind of find the map, I didn't know if there's any way to do a little utilization, but I think they was too much trouble to tell everybody, but if it's easy, then, so we're ready.
Well, you've got a lot of time. What?
I'll make sure while we finish this, let's first.
Yeah, just, just a, so Kathy and I have already talked about this. And that is putting the conference plan on the web in a way that's much more accessible than sort of sorting through a document like this. So just want to make you aware of that, that's something we could talk.
And that doesn't exist to actually, a very.
We're in the 21st century now, it's.
I've been a bit of a regional agitator for a long time. And think we waste the valuable opportunities by not sharing resources, intelligence, and other important components of our communal experience with our sister cities around here and trying to connect. To have shared industrial objectives and to have limited development opportunities, which doesn't say that it's been almost fully developed in the minds of people where they want it, I think is a mistake. And that we miss out on shared opportunities, that's very broad, vague, and it's not at all specific. But I think part of our obligation by code, by code, is to find a way to knit our transportation corridors, our industrial corridors with these surrounding cities, and to knit carefully and do well. Or to at least have one component of this plan that discusses it with some emphasis and detail. We have handers planning with a ton of data information. We have water control projects in town, we have all these resources that we share, but we don't address them head on. We don't recognize the role of HRT and all the other regional players that we have to contend with. The one thing I brought up in my private phone call, I got it. Was, you know, what are the areas really, in the next 20 years, where we need serious vast transit development? And maybe there's only a couple. And maybe if we emphasize it within the plan, they can get attention with these regional bodies that might control the purse strings entered or just accomplished. But that would require us to have some consensus among our, our spared group on where those areas are. You know, District 6, Oceanfront, you've got two major, you've got at least one regional node right here, right, drop right there. How do you get that?
So, so at that point in the plan, there is a policy that says the city will initiate a study on Virginia Beach Boulevard. Because that is the most important corridor in the city. To figure out what to do with transportation along that corridor. And that will be in partnership with HRT, PPO. We even call these people out in the policy, it has to be a coordinate effort. That would be initiated within the next five years. I think that's critically important to get that study done, so you have clarity about what to do with Virginia Beach Boulevard, the right way with Virginia Beach Boulevard. The second recommendation is a combination of independence, Princess Anne Boulevard, Princess Anne Road, excuse me, from town center down to municipal center, that is also considered a regional corridor. But that is a lower priority than Virginia Beach Boulevard. So the plan is very specific about what the priority corridors are and what the next steps are for those priority corridors. Which part of this plan, I'm sorry to ask this point, but which part of this plan would you say you would direct someone to, to learn about our efforts to have regional compacts with the localities surrounding us and other major authorities that control these subjects like waste disposal, infrastructure, commercial development, all these things? Where does that go? You, on transportation, I just told you where you go, with the other services. Actually, there's, there's another place where the plan is fairly specific, and that is coordinating, there's a, there's a regional trail plan that's been put together. We specifically pull in that map in the regional trail plan and say, whatever the city does needs to be in cahoots. Pardon the phrase, is the wrong word.
Align.
Align, thank you, well, I needed a lawyer for that one.
It's a little better than I wanted.
Conspire.
Conspire. So anyway, so, so as far as waste management and some of those other things, no, it does not speak of us. We did get a comment from the visioning, and I can't, I can't remember the name of it.
BD Vision?
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a question, I was going to bring that up later today, but about regional integration.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's a legitimate comment, and I think we need to appropriate that into the plan, and we can add some language to do that.
Because so much of that connectivity, how the economy depends on.
Yeah.
And that was even to speaking to Commissioner Stu Blumberg's point of other companies looking to come to Virginia Beach. But truly, Hampton Roads, we've got to get across that tunnel to the, you know, bring the materials, we have to figure that out.
The city joined the industrial, the regional industrial development consortium. And so that's one of the items in there.
That's what we're talking about. I really value that, what that was.
I think there's some of these references, I'm just asking for something a little more, you know, go to section three, you know what I mean? And, and it's fully discussed, it's incorporating, there's been so much work done. It would be so easy to slide in here with the times to decide to do it. Maybe the rest of the plan is out of town of it. And I, I would like to see some of it, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
I'm not late to the party, so I'm so sorry, this is a dead person, you know, so I'm sure a few pieces have been widely discussed. But I was worried that I didn't see the joint transportation. A solution that was going to solve the problem that Light Rail was going to be trying to solve, since we're, you know, apparently not going to do that. And I just don't, I don't see anything that's going to be able to help to get in and out of the city and then leave to all the other, the other parcel of, of the state. And I don't really see how we're going to true initiative through the cities without having something that's awful street. So I just don't know if you have some knowledge about what's going on with discussing those real life units besides the, the pieces that are discussed here.
Yeah, so, so you are late to begin, we've had several workshops talking about the integration of land use and transportation. Transportation, they're, they're fundamentally linked. And so, give you an example, I was coming in today on Holland Road. And I'm going by shopping centers, and there's this very, in front of most of them, there's this really nice HRT bus stop. And then you start thinking about, well, how do people go from those stores that are behind cars to that transit stop? And there's no incentive to get from there to here, because the real incentive is to get in a car over there. Because the car is in between the transit stop and, and, and the storefront. Also, when you're there, you can walk from store to store, but that's about it. So what we're proposing with redevelopment of these centers is reconfiguring these places, so that there's a mix of land uses. So there's walkable destinations within the center itself. Cars get regulated to the back. The transit stop becomes the focal point for the entire center. So people will have incentives to not use their cars, but rather walk or use transit to get to where they need to get to. So that transformation is essential to make these other modes viable. So it, it really does start with how do you configure land uses to get people to change how they get about. A lot of people just go straight to the transportation improvements and don't think about the land use and development patterns that are needed to support that. So that's, that's the, the fundamental purpose is not just to intensify development along these quarters, but we heard consistently when we were out in public, that people wanted other options besides automobiles.
Do we really think that this is going to solve that problem? And I'm, I'm just asking because I've tested this out, so I want to see how bad it always was to ride a bus around here. And to go 15 minutes in my car, it took an hour and a half. And I just don't know that people are going to make this kind of change with the buses. Maybe they will, maybe they're cute now, and have wifi. And I'm not sure, I'm just speculating about, but I'm just, I guess, I was, I'm looking at this and I just wasn't convinced as far as my knowledge, that it was going to be enough that people just started riding buses.
Let me, let me give you a real life example. And this goes back to when I was a kid, which is back in the 60s. My grandparents lived in Arlington, Virginia, quite off of Wilson Boulevard. And I remember going to their, they lived in a little apartment complex, and I remember going to it. Wilson Boulevard was pretty run down at that point in time, just leased little shoplifts and stuff along the way. What Arlington County decided to do was to invest in building metro. They were going to put metro right in I-66, but Arlington County funded up $300 million to put it underneath Arlington County, which they did. They put zoning in around each one of the transit stations, Claren and Courthouse, and Boston and Roseland. That fundamentally changed the development patterns along that corridor. So if you go to that quarter now, the preferred way of getting from place to place, and we have an office there, so I know this, is not to get in a car, but is to either walk or use transit. So that's the kind of change that can happen. And I, I used to teach a course for Federal Transit Administration on Transit Oriented Development. So I've been all around the country, and I've seen these transformations all over the country. So it can happen. But you've got to get your policies and your land use regulations and your transportation investments to line up to make more. And that's what this intended to do.
This is the buses I'm talking about, but I love metro. I want to go to the, maybe I get back, if there was a train that started at Oceanfront, I'm not wanting to go to the city. I don't want to go over there, and now it's still going to come to in front of the city, which is a thing we should be brought, you know, tourism standpoint. But I just, I'm not sure about buses, I guess it's just the bus part.
Yeah.
I always avoid the buses in Northern Virginia. And I would rather walk than ride the bus to the metro station and then ride metro, because buses are creepy.
And that, you know, that's the problem, if you don't get a density, I don't want to go too far down this path, but if you don't get density around the transit stations.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
That, that's going viral right now.
Really, they're creepy.
But, but, but it can, and it does happen. You know, Richmond Bus Rapid Transit is a pretty, it's pretty successful going up Broad Street. I can give you all sorts of examples where you use these modified buses. Rail is, is certainly an option, and you can eventually get there, potentially. But there's a lot of evolution that has to happen. That evolution won't happen unless you get things lined up properly, that's the point of the plan.
So to tie a couple of these ideas together, including what Commissioner Plumley brought up early on about checking the state required boxes, I don't believe we've touched base, and I'd like to give staff an opportunity to just comment on it. Norfolk is also redoing their comp plan, Norfolk 2050. Chesapeake is redoing their comp plan right now. And so here we have three cities, in other words, two of our four neighbors are all redoing their comp plans at the same time. Would staff like to make any comment about the coordination work that you've done to ensure that some of these things, particularly on transportation, but maybe on some of the other topics, that we're visioning together? Would you like to say anything about that?
So, transportation on the.
Transportation's done regionally already, so HRTs are a business pro-regional approach. So those are, and every city has a representative, representative at HRT. And then, I've been working with my colleagues at, in Chesapeake and Norfolk. We presented at the Virginia APA conference last year together about working together at regional, regional board conference.
So the ideas that we see in this draft comp plan, do they reach to our adjoining borders with Norfolk and Chesapeake? Or have a relationship, you would say that they are in alignment?
Yes.
And we do, so they've contacted us and offer us the ability to comment on theirs and vice versa.
Thank you for putting that on the table, because I had heard that up till now, and that you were working on it. I think it's important for everybody to understand that's happening.
Yeah, and I would just say to you to go a little bit further, so on our, and I just bring the, the Berg Station SGA plan up. When we did an update there, because it's right on the border, we always send our stuff over to Norfolk to comment and vice versa. And they come to our meetings and find any input.
Thank you, George, thank you, George.
All right, just want to be rude for a minute, we're at 79, and I want to be mindful that everyone has an opportunity to ask your question. If you have one more slide.
Oh, there were, there were just some other changes we made, but I don't think they're relevant, I think they were just.
I appreciate you being active part of the conversation. Okay, I think Commissioner Mount is giving something that you have bringing up?
Yeah.
Questions, conversations amongst yourselves?
Yeah. Let's see. Oh, page 79. I don't know, it was just kind of over, but I think every other context area has a topic for economic sustainability and diversity, and it's just missing this draft, I didn't know if there was a. I don't know if it was not.
Is that known, hey JD? Economics sustainability.
Yeah, it is, that's just in a different spot than that, so it's weird. I was looking, I was trying to compare and just didn't find it, so thank you. There it is there. Yeah. And then. Oh, page 116. Just doing a couple of quick headers too. Page 116, the third bullet, plan for and invest in public amenities and facilities that will attract courses and residents to the Central Beach District, are we really just looking at the opponent on the Central Beach District? Or are we looking at the whole resort area?
The whole resort area.
Okay, just making sure, I'll clean that up. And then, page 130. Under economics sustainability and diversity. I think these two bullet points are just kind of, I think they could be worded better. If I were to put it, give staff that, I would say retain, create jobs, foster economic vitality in the Princess Anne Common Planning Areas through light industry and technology-based uses. And you need venues and activities that, such as sports stores, E tourism, eco-tourism, and educational opportunities. I think provides settings within the Princess Anne Commons Planning Area. Or, I think it just needs to be a little bit more broad, so that we're not again putting ourselves in a box. I feel like it's just kind of very specific, adjust those. And then nurture and expand existing businesses, facilitate economic growth, support and track year-round visitors through sports stores, and help sustain the city's economy and tax base. I think it kind of opens it up a little bit. So, page 133. 133. To the Prince Sam Commons. Yeah, 133, the second paragraph, the very last sentence, I don't think it's correct. An example of a priority that emerged from this ITA innovation park, which recently adopted its own set of design guidelines. That was originally, it was biomedical and then it transitioned over to physical, not used or biomedical. So I don't know if...
They do.
Is that...
They have design guidelines.
No, no, no. I know they have design guidelines. I just feel like, I don't know, it puts an emphasis on the innovation park. It sounds like the innovation park emerged from this area. I do understand that it definitely has the design guidelines, but it just doesn't seem like, I don't know, just it seems like it's not, the timeline is a little strange.
I agree with you on the wording. The business park did not adopt the running design guidelines. That was adopted by our local government. And so I think just trying to clean up on the wording. It's a bit...
That might be the bulk of what I have here. Somebody else has something? Go ahead and then obviously if I have anything left.
I had one large topic and it's more informed question. One of the things I don't see in here, in terms of economic development, sustainability, quality of life, is an emphasis on our local schools, keeping them modernized, keeping them up to competitive level. I don't think I saw that in my interview. Is that by design? Did I mix it?
It wasn't by design.
Again, I don't try to add into a specific place, but as a concept, it seems to me that all the threads we're talking about, why someone coming here, bringing a workforce here, maintaining the quality of our local educational system, including facilities, particularly as our demographic is changing. I think it's an important overall strategy for our land use. And we'll be changing campuses, consolidating these new things, new areas, but it's missing.
We could certainly add language that gets at what Walter's talking about as far as making specific recommendations.
I'm trying to do that, just that local education is an element of our local...
Sure. Because I was just thinking about the higher education landscape. The Chalk Region is the only, this is a great region. I just wasn't sure. But I think definitely our public education, page 12, is a highlight for us.
Page 27, neighborhood safety and wellbeing, develop a neighborhood monitoring system and use rarely available data to continually evaluate well-being. This sounds really good, but is this realistic?
Yeah, I think so.
Are there programs in place that currently do this?
There are. There are. To me, I think it was actually an idea that Brian raised.
I mean, I think it's good and it should come out. I just want to make sure it's a realistic idea that we can implement and put in place.
Yeah. I mean, the issue's going to be how many neighborhoods do you keep up with? And it's got to be phased in, right? And you don't want to focus in on the neighborhoods that are struggling right now. They're the ones you really want to start paying attention to. But yeah, with the way data are collected now, there's just tons of GIS data, there's tons of socioeconomic data, there's a lot of data that's rarely available.
By 2024, probably be scary for what we think is scary right now.
Yeah. By the way, you're using that phone. That data that tracks you is sold to Apple.
Street by street.
Another number coming up there.
So in that same section of page 27, since the commissioner's raised that city council has told us repeatedly two things that they've used, the most common complaint of the citizens, and it's in this area, about neighborhood safety. They've told us repeatedly, they cut through streets and a lack of sidewalks for the two things that they threw on the street. I think I mentioned that in my call. And if you wanted to highlight them as an example in the bullet point, of two things that are positive and wrong, houses are being identified.
And they usually are big issues.
Of the planes. They don't want cuts to streets and less sidewalks.
That's a great idea.
You can get done with a lot of those for us. Probably a lot of it's here. We just have a neighbor's not blocking. Because I don't want people looking at it.
I want to thank you for the pizza. And I want everybody to know Holly P for those who are self-applying to the Twitter boards. And I want to thank former city manager, James Ford, for attending. If I could give him my seat, I gladly would. He's worked out of the city, but probably all of us combined. Thank you. Good evening.
She didn't tell me verbal... I've heard Chris was the presentation. If I had an opportunity to offer some comments, he said he wanted to back for level eight and through.
I think Commissioner Matuski, do you have anything?
Pretty good. I think I'm okay. Yeah, thank you.
And thank all of you for providing me the comments. Much appreciated. You ready?
We're ready.
Okay. I'll go through this fairly quickly. So like I said at the very beginning, what we've done is put together an outline. It's nothing more than that at this stage to give you a sense of our thoughts about what we present to the public. It's really framed around these questions. And I'll go through each one of these questions. First question is, what is Imagine Virginia Beach or the Conference of Plan? And the answer is it guides how Virginia Beach will develop over the next 20-plus years. It does go beyond, even though forecast years, 20 years in the future, it does go beyond that. It sets goals, objectives, and policies and clearly laid out in the plan itself. It focuses on land use and development patterns, but those relate to the environment, transportation, housing, safety, and security. So we'll talk about those connections. It is not an implementation tool. There are implementation tools that the city uses to make sure that it's happening the way the city wants it to happen. Most importantly is the zoning ordinance. That's where the rubber meets the road in terms of what you can or cannot use the property. It's guided by the Conference of Plan, but the enforcement happens with the zoning ordinance. And you don't want to be, you don't want the plan to be redundant with the zoning ordinance. It doesn't make any sense to have two documents that basically are saying the same thing. It needs to guide it. The second, most important, it may be equally important, is how the city spends its money in the capital improvements program. And then there's other ordinances the city uses. But the Conference of Plan guides all these implementation tools. Second question is, why is it being updated? And the answer is Virginia law requires it be updated every five years. And I'm correct about that, right?
Yes.
To reflect changing economics and demographics, the current Com Plan was adopted in 2016. So it was put on hold because of the pandemic, but it's now being updated. And it's a chance to revisit the current goals, objectives, and policies, such as should the green line be maintained or not? We got a resentment, yes, it should be maintained. And determine whether those goals and policies and objectives are working or not. And then a lot of things have happened just externally, macro level influences that are affecting the city. Flooding is probably the big thing that's cropped up. It wasn't, that it wasn't an issue back in 2016, but it's becoming an even bigger issue. The city has implemented the sea level wise program, its stormwater program. The Blue Line was established since the last plan was updated, which keeps services from being extended, water supply being extended south of the Blue Line. Affordable housing pressures have cropped up. There have been economic shifts. So those are the things that have influenced the plan itself, the macro level things that have influenced the plan. Third question, how was it updated? Step one was to then identify commonly held aspirations and challenges. I looked at these dates and it's just amazing what we've been through over the last two years. We started focus group sessions, and I think many of you attended those focus group sessions and got some very good feedback about what the challenges and aspirations were. And that was in the summer of 2023. And then we had around one of public workshops. We had four workshops in the fall of 2023. They pretty much confirmed what we were hearing in the focus groups, the value of the focus groups, though, is we could really dig into any kind of issues that people had and have one-on-one conversations with people. And the reason why we had the workshops was to confirm are these the same issues and are the same dynamics at play? So there's a lot of consistency there that we heard, no matter where we were in the city, a lot of consistency, which made it easy for us to develop the goals, objectives, and the big ideas in the fall and winter of 2023 and 2024. We translated the goals and objectives into an integrated plan and policies. And then we took those policies and the plan, those concepts, and then another series of workshops and we had this online survey where we got people to give us their thoughts about the policies, the context areas, the structure of the plan, the big ideas. And we got very positive feedback wherever we talked. Not everybody was completely enthusiastic about it. We got some good comments and feedback, but by and large, people recognized and agreed that what these, that the way the plan was structured, the way the policies were structured, reflected where they wanted to go about the goals and objectives and policies. There's also a real thorough review, and you all can attest to this by all the departments within the city. We had comments from everybody. And then we had a series of workshops with the Planning Commission. You all know too well that we had all those meetings where you got to speak with what's going on. There's still a meeting. So a lot of review of what we put together and a lot of refinement and tightening up of what we've done along the way.
I mean, Chris, just for a matter of clarity, is the review every five years not necessarily the update?
Right. That's correct.
Repeatedly an update, correct.
Just review.
Just review, okay.
Just for point...
You may not have that update.
We've done a lot of work for the...
All right. So what stays the same in the updated plan, protecting the environment, people are very clear about that. Maintaining the Green Line, very clear about that. Continue to follow the relevant plans and policies like the ATA, transitionary guidelines, the strategic growth area plans that were put together and are in the last update, special economic growth areas and neighborhoods. Those things continue to live on through this update. What's new, really the big ideas, which are creating an environmental open space framework. The goal is to start connecting the large protected open spaces that the city has. And that really is a tremendous asset that the city has. And that first Landing State Park, Fallscape State Park, the Back Bay Wildlife Refuge, the estuaries, there's a lot of wonderful natural lands within the city. And the next step is how do you connect all those up? And there's a lot of things you can relate to and integrate with, such as, you know, in order to deal with flooding and sea level rise, land's going to have to be purchased, lowland land's going to have to be purchased. So that creates an opportunity to create these corridors. Army Corps of Engineers is going to be doing their flight control projects, and so that's all going to have to be synthesized into this. State actually has a program where you can get grant money for wildlife corridors, protect wildlife corridors. So there's ways you can leverage all these different sources to start making this framework come together. And what I think is really neat about this, it's not, it's not a place that people can't enjoy, and that's what the linear park system is all about, putting in trails and parks throughout this entire system so that people from anywhere in the city can have easy access to the system and be able to ride their bikes or walk to a lot of different places, a lot of natural areas, a lot of other areas within the city in a very natural setting. And, you know, in terms of eco tourism, I think this would be really an interesting thing to have. What's new, continue the context areas and talk a little bit about the context areas, what they are, why they didn't define the way they have. And we've been over those enough with you all. I don't need to go into any detail about those. The other thing that's newer, place types, they are related to underlying existing underletting zoning districts. As I said, the key is that we really focused in on where redevelopment is going to happen is not going to be within the neighborhood. So it's going to be along commercial and business-owned areas, along the major quarters within the city. And what they do is they help focus redevelopment and initial development along those quarters and to protect neighborhoods. And they also provide places for special uses for economic development. And then what's next in terms of the update process? Well, this is, we will have the two public meetings. This is for you all, not for the public meeting. We will have two public meetings that followed the outline I just went through. We will have more briefings. We'll have another briefing with city council and possibly back with you again. At some point in time, you all are going to have to recommend adoption of the plan to city council, and then they will need to adopt. So that's coming up. But back to the public meetings, they're probably going to wonder what happens, and you're probably going to wonder what happens after the Imagine BP is adopted. So the first thing is to start integrating these programs to create the environmental space, environmental open space framework in the linear park system. Continue all the programs and maybe enhance those programs that limit development south of the Green Line and Blue Line. Guide development, which was going to require updating the zoning ordinance. So what this plan does with the design guidelines in it provides all of the fodder that's going to be needed to ease the, the updating of the zoning ordinance that is sorely needed. And that's one of the purposes of the design guidelines is to provide guidance, not only for current reviews of developments that happen within these different areas, but for updating the zoning ordinance. Guide the growth into the industrial institutional areas like I meant before, updating the zoning ordinance, said before, updating the zoning ordinance like I just mentioned. Creating the multimodal corridors prior, this is where the emphasis is going to be initially on Virginia Beach Boulevard. Implement the housing study recommendations. Walter, we heard you, the city council only recommended implementing three. But we need to say something about that because affordable housing is an issue. And update evaluate the need for small area plans. Probably one of the first ones is going to be short drive. It's a very old David plan that needs to be looked at again. And then back to the monitoring neighborhoods. And again, the focus is going to be on neighborhoods that are currently struggling. And it's to get to the issues, not only about housing quality, housing stock, and housing affordability, but some of the things that Walter was mentioning, such as cut through traffic and the need for sidewalks for safety. So that's what's next. So that's what, we'll flesh this out. Certainly had a lot more graphics in it, but again, the intent here was just to give you a sense of what's going to be presented and get your feedback on it.
So I'll follow the sub with an email. I'll copy everybody. A couple of comments about the transportation, as you said, you want to feedback. I'm on slide 19. Why is it being updated under the third bullet point for flight changing? There we are. Somewhere in there, I think population change should be one of the, should be the fifth thing that we reassess the external and internal conditions. And that's part of what's driving some of this. And the first bullet point where it says flooding, the Army Corps coastal storm risk is related there. I know we're going to mention it later on, but that is an external thing the federal government wants to protect its military assets. That's why that's coming. And so that's something we have to contend with. On page 21.
Which is?
What stays the same? Okay, begins protecting environment for good. So this is about credo. If we're going to say these things in the presentation of the public, maintain the adopted plans and policies, continue to follow the ITA plan, these kinds of things. We talked about state, the document itself has really got to do that. And the work we talked about earlier in this meeting, where it doesn't do that right now, there are still changes to be corrected. If we're going to... If we're going to recommend not vote to pass this out to the public, I can tell you now, my recommendation is it only goes to the public if those things are true, which means that the changes we talked about tonight are actually put into the document that goes to the public, that they're not seeing the thing we saw tonight, they're seeing an updated version. On the next page, what's new, supporting initiatives. The master transportation plan is specifically completing streets. I keep going. I'm sorry. What's new, where the top line is in documentation? There you go. Okay. So bottom of that page, supporting initiatives, the complete streets policy in the master transportation plan are supporting initiatives for that linear park system. Again, wording, Army Corps of Engineers, it is not flood control projects, it's coastal waves. Please click ahead to slide 24. It's still what's new. Top line is the word purpose. Very good. I think we've missed an opportunity here to emphasize what's in the foreword to the whole plan about build up, infill, redevelopment, those things that lead off the entire document. I think we need to emphasize some of that here or somewhere else in this presentation. Under neighborhoods. There we go.
Yeah.
There are two things. One is in this plan that is a big change, and one is not in this plan. And to help the public understand what's going on here, I think we really call out ADUs are part of this, and I think that's a sub-bullet point under neighborhoods. It should be mentioned so people can think about it, focus on it. In my district, I had a lot of mixed reaction. I think that'll be a good topic to hear the public what they want. This does not change anything about STRs. And I may really say, there's no changes on STRs. Some people may want changes, or they might not. Let's be transparent and say that's not even here. On the next slide, page 25, what's next in the process? I'll kind of follow. Two comments. I think it is imperative that the boards and commissions be specifically given the call out to look at this and comment if they wish. And we've got a lot of man use groups. They need to be alerted that this is ready, and they only have one meeting cycle typically, so this is going to come out in fact. The fact that Hank visited us a year ago and said we're working on it is not the same, the same this finished document and saying that's great, or we have something else to say. And we're there for a reason, council advisement, we need to give them that shot. Lastly, on this slide. Norfolk held four public meetings for their conflict final draft. Chesapeake in August is holding five. Virginia Beach says two. I want it understood that the commission did not pick two. I don't know if it picked two. I don't know what the right number is, but when it's commented that the adjoining cities had four and five, whoever has the answer to that question should be prepared to answer that question. It's not this commission. On what happens after the adoption, I am on the third bullet point, guided growth, Sega one through three, not Sega four. And then the next page, 27, began a strike forward implement as we agreed earlier on the second bullet point. We agreed recently noted that city council has nominated two plans for early update and evaluation. One is Shore Drive corridor, whether it's historic or temporary, and might as well mention it because there are already flagged there. And then this is a question, my last comment on this. The implementation of this plan is primarily through the CIP on the public investment side. So is it to be expected that if this plan is adopted this fall, that the CIP will take it into account in its development? Is that a reasonable expectation?
Sure, I mean, certain pieces. So one, for instance, is this comprehensive plan is going to be recommended rewrite or set up. We were, we took that over this year. It was requested, not funded. It'll go back next year, maybe funded, may not. That's, that's just an example.
So is it reasonable to add a bullet point that there will be recommendations to consults relative to the CIP to carry this on?
Yeah. We mentioned the zoning ordinance being updated, so that falls in line.
Maybe technology, maybe the zoning ordinance, maybe study. I don't know if it is necessary. Thank you for telling us all those comments. I'll send them an email in case it was wrong.
I was just going to ask everyone if you had some specifics or maybe has already shared with staff, which is a way of holding ourselves to a shared information. You know, we put your bullets into the staff to make sure we have everything. That would be really helpful. I know some of you have already said to me and whatnot, but make sure we need that over so we can have our action items.
At least, pardon. And then we pass dates around.
We did. So we do have the combined date of September 24th. But what I wanted to ask is that I need to get some feedback, and certainly the list that commissioner matches was together. Two hours, I don't know when that's going to be. And it's really other than, it's something that also circulated to Caitlin as consideration for staff. But I want to be mindful, some folks are working during the day, like, could we do an afternoon meeting at 1:00 or 1:05?
I think we should use more of this to tolerate ourselves. Do it. And quite honestly.
I'd have to spend seven hours.
The reason I bring that up just from the date is because I think we need to sit and we need to hash and log this out. It's very difficult to think on these subjects while we're in the middle of the presentation and we don't want to hold him hostage and we're trying to juggle all these things. We yet to meet as a group to say, okay. We want to see the neat ideas that each of you have, that one of you want to bring us, and there should be something that we're each bringing to this, that we identify with or not. And I'm not sure we've had a chance to really, you know, together shape it. I think it's been great with all the meetings that we've had, and we've become, I mean, things have so many.
Right. You know, the way we really had to talk amongst ourselves a lot before, and that we had, I think this document really fantastic. So I wanted to ask the commission what their intention is, what their thoughts are about meeting one more time before it goes to the public.
What do you do Saturday?
Pardon me?
Do Saturday?
I won't be sensitive to staff.
Oh.
I'm not sure. What is the question you're asking?
About meeting one more time before it goes to the public, or having the team do the edits and the reviewing of them? That's what I want to figure out for the next step for this, and then go on to the three questions.
Maybe before you ask that question, let's see if we get a little clarity with this question. Once you compile all the data from the public input, are we even having an opportunity to kind of look at all the things and see comments and stuff? And then from there, you had the opportunity to massage it if needed?
Yeah. My thinking, Kathy, you may disagree with this, is we have the public meetings, and you may even want to have the city council review it before it comes back to this. Now you'll have input from the public as well as city council before you really finalize this.
It would be ideal, and this is a, I want to just ask, about the boards and commissions, they've been trying to be about six weeks, because depending on when they hit, and the cycle of stuff comes back. So that's part of the public. And like, so that, all that could come back after the public. Right. And then.
Well, stop or change.
Stop or change instantly. It's all going to be happening.
I'd like to address that, too. It will be. So as soon as you say you feel like we have a good solid draft to go, we'll send the link to everyone. It's already out there. We're accepting comments. If groups want us to come out and speak to them again as they have the last two years, we will go back out and walk them through, just as Chris went through. This also, to address the two public meetings, that's not the only way we are collecting public comment. We've noticed that putting this plan out there and letting people review and then send in their written comments, that's where we're getting a lot of our participation. We're talking about putting together a video, too, like a three-minute, that we can put out there and explain what Chris went through today to tell people about the conflict. We did that in the very beginning, but we'd like to do that again to try to get people more engaged. But unfortunately, in our public meetings, we're not getting large numbers, so we're trying to capture public comment in any way that we can. And we, we really feel like from tonight, we are going to go through, we recorded this session, we will go through with a fine-tooth comb, make these comments, and have that ready to go. We'd like to go out without having a meeting again because I'm not sure what we will accomplish with another meeting.
Well, and I think I've been probably the biggest one to push to continue to get more, to massage this document and have more meetings. But I think they're at a pretty good spot, where I think that they understand, you know, what our concerns are. I think we've gotten to a really good spot, even though we're not, a lot of us are still a little unhappy with what's here. I think overall, the entire thing is.
I think it's a far better document than the BPN. A lot of the comments that we've been making all along have been put in there and addressed. There's the fine points, there's always going to be fine points to address. And every time a new version comes out, the slight change, there's something more there. I mean, I'm not saying I'm ready to shoot it out to the public until I see the next iteration, but we're getting close. That's why I didn't know how far out this retreat was, we're planning, and I'm not looking to delay anything. I just thought it was a good choice, and I was like, okay.
What if we did it? What if we, Kathy and Chris, help me on how, you know, working with this staff, what if we receive the revised, the next version, and rather than meeting before it goes to the public, I'm going to ask the commission their thoughts on, I don't know, one week?
Wait the comments.
Wait the comments back? Review it again, one week, ten days, and then get it back and comment to the staff? And then at that point, I mean, if we have an opportunity, we'll stay in here and go there. I mean, it's still, it's not a, it's not a definite, there's.
Yeah, you can continue to make comments to us throughout.
Right. We still have to get public comment and then address the change.
Right, and then come back to us and talk about it again.
I'm going to agree with you. I think that's right. However, one of the things that we spent a lot of time on tonight was walking back this stuff that snuck in without our knowledge, without our involvement from economic development. We talked about area after area, where this stuff that came in through that channel had to then, it was new to us, it changed perceptions. For that plan to work, there can't be another one of those things happening. Whatever comments are coming in from other entities need to be held in the public, and there'll be part of the public comment after we put it out. But if we can take the plan and we solve it, implement the changes we all discussed without other changes creeping in now, just in the next whatever it takes, two weeks, then great, unless it can get up. But if there's new things that we didn't talk about, that we have to go find again in a 200-page document, well, then we're just chasing our toes.
Well, and I just want to make sure, so everyone's clear, we haven't tried to backdoor anything, we have not tried to be sneaky.
I don't think that's at all true.
Well, I just want to make sure, because I've heard a couple of comments.
This is a long document. And I don't think they're sneaking. I just like, I think we need to make sure we have enough time. Because many times, you folks can project, you can give us the document, but because of 100 problems, and we know that those are real problems, it comes to day before. And now we're hustling, and we've got to stop everything else and try and get it. So, so we need that seven, 10 days for real to really address it. I was going to ask, this might be an outrageous request, for a word index, because I like to use real stuff in my hand, and if there was a word index to find things to make me here, but I think that can be automatically generated and not laboriously created, but maybe I'm wrong about that.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask, too. Do you prefer the next copy after we make these adjustments? Do you want it hard copied, or do you want it electronically? Because then you can't both.
Because they'll search for the term. I don't believe how you're wanting to make it tonight.
Yeah, we can send you the link. That's, that's not a problem.
I like a link to review first. The hard copy helps me kind of understand.
And so, Carrie, we're talking about the N2P as well as the main model of the document.
Yes.
Great.
So how long do you know it takes to do the revisions from what we've done today?
So I'm asking staff quickly, but we have to comb through. So we took a lot of notes tonight, but we've got to comb through this tape and make sure we caught everything, because I don't want to be in a position where we come in again and we may miss some things and we should have caught it. I want, I want to get past this point.
I don't, I'm comfortable moving forward as long as we get it to look at.
Right, so we have planning commission on the 13th. So we all need to focus on the plans. So would it be realistic, I don't know what in a hurry you'd see, but like after planning?
So Rachel and Hank, how fast do we think we can make some? Because we've got, we've got to compile everything, but this is our main focus, so.
I mean, you tell us, we'll get it done whenever needed.
So planning commission is a week.
Or 13th.
Sometime, we'll be, sorry. Or maybe like right after sending the mission, then we can focus on planning, focus on content?
I know I had a lot of comments, so if you want to sit down, I can.
Yeah, and your earlier comments were very helpful because it said D Page and specifically called it out. So we can provide it in that format. That's very helpful for us.
What would be helpful, I think, is you compile a list of all the comments, so those back out to me just to make sure you got it right.
That's fine. We read last time, it didn't happen, so if you want to do it that way, that's okay.
What, that you didn't get the action?
You had the action items.
I didn't get the action items until late in the meeting, that it was supposed to be soon after the meeting, we were validated before, went to the consultant. I got the action items for the revised one.
So now?
Yeah.
So if they, how do you want to handle it? If we're backing off, did we talk in seven to 10 days that you wanted to review it?
I would like to at least have it a week.
All right, so let's go with that. If the target is you want to get this thing out to the public by the end of August, can we back a week or?
We'd like to get it out to the public by the end of September.
Right. My point is that that week backing off gives you the outer deadline that you would have to work on and revise it. It could be as soon as the 15th, get us through the hearings.
After order.
Yeah, I know they're playing off at the front, but I know we need to set the two days for public meetings also.
Right, we're looking at the 17th and 18th.
See, I have the Amber Alert comment text, so I don't know.
Yes.
If you need mail, I don't have an email for six days, like, maybe three days.
It'll likely be something like 6:00 or 6:30.
When is, when is, I like on September 7th, if you think you so.
And both.
And then everyone who gave you feedback on the dates, the state, the legislature, we can look for.
Rachel, is that good or not good for your, those dates we talked about?
We found a lot of work that's not good.
Right, so if we're 17th, 18th, we're good. Yep.
It has to be the next week, I can be here for that. So then I come back and sort of give the meeting.
Okay, so 17th and 18th for most dates for the public.
Perpased.
What is their date of order?
Is it 24th?
Is it 24th?
Tendatively 24th.
Tendatively 24th.
24th is the target. 24th is the target date.
Yeah.
That's the only other thing that's going on.
Is the intention to do it easy or to do a meeting during the day? It's asked to do it 12:00.
Do you have 12:00 on that day?
12:00. I can do during the day, Mondays and Fridays very easily, but very hard if they're way too long. It can happen to my entire day, Friday.
So you're not available during the day on 24th?
I think it's very hard. I'm kind of locked in. Tuesday, Thursday, Thursday.
So for the con plan, just let us auto off tomorrow with a specific calendar so we can put together the dates. But we will, we understand what you said tonight. We'll turn that around a good way. And like, you know, when we're going to get these comments completed from tonight, when we'll send you out the next version.
So we'll get with you as well. Well, I can reset the dates out for the retreat now that we have to 12:00.
I like the staff's availability, beyond just the 24th.
The 3rd, I think was the other day that was out there that seemed like.
September 3rd.
Oh.
August, September. Pardon me.
The 3rd was August or September. It was September 3rd and the 24th were the first two choices. And then the 8th and 18th were the back stage.
3rd.
Yeah, I think you get all your dates.
How much?
Did you get the 24th?
Yes.
24th. I can do the 24th.
You can roll this down.
I'll pull it for you. That's the only way you try.
Keep the jobs.
It's really hard. So it's very hard. You can even, I'll pull up if you want to.
As long as you don't dust us, Joe. You wouldn't have to, as long as you don't dust us. But for our business.
Okay. All right, so is there anything else? Is what we're doing there good?
Yes, one last thing. Just been thinking about the master transportation plan and what Walter said. And then I did bring it up last time about the senior housing is not in an aging population. Not really being affected by this con plan. It would be nice to have something in there, especially since we called out the number of people over the age of 65 is expected to increase about 77%, about 1/3 of those. Over 65 will have a disability that limits mobility. Yeah, I think that is one thing that I think our city, along with affordable housing, is going to turn into a crisis with the senior housing. So some ways to address that. But other than that, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time. Thank you. And wonderful.